Here with us this evening, at this time, I'd like to have Councilman Guines offer a prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by George Lawrence. Mr. Guines.
That's right. Gracious Father, give us all the grace that we come to you alone. I thank you for your many blessings. We thank you for this opportunity to serve the city. We thank you for this opportunity to serve our state. We thank you for this opportunity to serve our country. God bless the United States. God bless all out there. God bless the world. God bless Ukraine and all of its citizens. Yes, calling, amen, we pray.
Amen.
Our great flag, our allegiance to the Father, and I am the sake of America. We are a people of justice, one nation, one God, indivisible, veritable, just.
Thank you, gentlemen. This time, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Lawrence, and a second by Mr. Guines. Is there any discussion? All in favor? It's approved on a six oh vote. Thank you. This time, if the clerk will read the revisions, please.
To the policy agenda, we're substituting item five B resolution declaring the intention to issue general obligation bonds in the amount of seventeen million dollars. To the consent agenda, we're substituting five B exhibit A only resolution accepting the annual certificate of the compliance officer.
I'll second it. So there's a motion by Mr. Lawrence to approve the agenda as amended, and a second by Mr. Guines. Is there any discussion? All in favor? It's approved on a six oh vote. All right, at this time, we'll move to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome everyone to this very special meeting that precedes Iberia St. Patrick's Day celebration coming up. We'll have a little things, but before we get started, let me, before I forget, I asked the council to spread to the expenses of the Biloxi travel credit card to the minutes. Okay? And before we go, I'd like Steve Schadmer from the director of the Rappis King Tournament to come up and give us a little update on what's upcoming. Steve?
I think the thing. From MGM Park, seeing all the spectators head into the big game tonight, and St. Patrick's Day coming up, and then certainly our golf tournament. I was reminiscing, last time I was sitting here was 2020 March, if we went down memory lane right before the world kind of shut down as we know it, the last twenty-three months. And so our tournament was not held, as you probably recall, both in 20 nor 21. Safe to say and happy to report that we are back officially, and we are three weeks out. We will be in its official capacity on the PGA Tour Champions calendar. We'll have all top seventy-eight players in the world come join us again in three weeks. It'll be televised internationally on the Golf Channel over the weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We will be taking our talents, if you will, to Grand Bear Golf Club, just up forty-nine. So it'll be a new venue. And we're excited about the opportunity to host not only the players, but all the spectators and fans here in our community. I just wanted to give you a little bit further. There's a bunch going on during the week that's not related to golf. Rappis King Systems, our title sponsor, has a handful of these security and screening seminars that will take place at the Golden Nugget. We'll have top industry leaders, veterans, military folk, clients, customers, et cetera, in town for these big meetings where they talk through best practices, what is the latest trends of the industry, and where security and screening is going, in addition to a relationship with our port just down the road in Gulfport. So in totality, it's a lot more than just golf. I think golf is the platform that we get to showcase our community. But we're certainly excited, and I just wanted to give an update to the council, but then also can ask for your continued support, both financially and operationally, from the event here in the next three weeks, and hope to see you out there.
Very good, Steve. I think the world is ready to get back to normal, and I think this is a good sign. Those golfers that were been here years and years are still excited about coming to Biloxi and, you know, going forward in 2022. So I thank you. If you have any questions, we'll be here to support you. You know, we have some items on the agenda that we'll go through tonight. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Schadmer.
All right. Here comes the moment. I'd ask Celeste and Keith and Danny, everybody to come up here. We're gonna offer the celebration before we have a celebration. This proclamation. Okay. This proclamation from the City of Biloxi, whereas for four centuries, Americans of Irish heritage have contributed their lives and fortunes to their adopted country. Whereas the Irish were the largest European group to inhabit the thirteen colonies in the seventy-five years leading up to the seventeen seventy-six revolution, and played a significant role in the war for independence. Whereas Irish Americans have excelled in every facet of life, including education, science, medicine, the arts, politics, debating. The Iberia Marching Society in Mississippi was formed to foster, promote, perpetuate Irish traditions, heritage, and fellowship of Irish and Irish-American descendants along the Mississippi Gulf Coast. And it is a viable ethnic organization that contributes energy and funds to enhance the quality of life. Now, therefore, I Andrew Fofo-Gillich, Mayor of the City of Biloxi, Mississippi hereby proclaim the month of March 2022 is Irish Heritage Month. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Look, I got one too.
Appreciate you.
If you want to.
Well, just thank y'all. Thank y'all for supporting us. I think we're gonna have a fabulous parade this year. And I just want y'all to know, I found out I was Irish in 2019, thirty-eight point six percent. My mama told me I was Native American Indian, not. So glad, but you don't, you can be Irish by desire, marriage, or heritage, anyway. You can be, so anybody can join our group. We want y'all all to know that.
Want to thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. By the way, for the remainder of the month, it's O'Gillich.
Oh, and it says kiss me.
Great, thank you. I think when I was grand marshal, whenever that was, they asked me, I asked my wife, what is his Irish heritage? He said, no, there is none. But he has Irish tendencies. Argue, drink, and fight. So we thank y'all. I think we're gonna take a little break now, right? We're gonna have a little, this will temporarily.
We will, we will recess for seven minutes.
Okay.
That's a lucky Irish number. I just made that rule up right now. You have seven minutes to partake of drinking green stuff or eating green cookies. Did you have anything else to say, Mr. Crosby?
The mayor.
Do what?
And the picture was Mary.
You sure you want to be seen with him? You must, you must need an alibi very badly. All right. So we'll, we'll recess for seven minutes, and then I'll hit the gavel seven minutes from now. Thank you. Grab something to eat and drink in the back, please.
I got somebody to give that to. We always, we always knew you had a little Irish in you.
Have lunch.
Married it, O'Keefe. We always knew she had a little Irish in her. Peter O'Bide, huh? Peter O'Bide. It's been a bye, O'Bide.
I wanted y'all to look at the boost check and say what it was. He just stood in the back.
I thought you can always use an Irish word.
Could've used this for the prayer. I'm sorry? I said, could've used this for the prayer. Irish prayer.
Right here on the box.
What's that, Russ?
Oh, I got that.
The last part that I wanted to tell him was orange beach, and it was like a six or seven million dollars.
But I want to keep vertical. I want to go.
I'll tell you on the phone more than I see you.
He asked me, and I asked, hey, I saw you.
Your name in the paper doing the question.
Okay.
That's what I tell you.
We came up with five twenty-five.
After you throw in six, and they just come to five.
Do you talk to the?
And I'm back, but I'm gonna call to come to the restaurant.
I told him you'd be able to stay.
What you gonna do, you know?
Hey, son. I am. How are you?
Still working on that leave issue.
If anything comes up, you need a little cooperation on the other end.
They're all a little.
Doesn't that get it to them?
I think it's because they, that would be a pass. Probably get pushed back.
I didn't get a missed call.
I did.
Sweet girl.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
It works.
What you need?
Yeah, I know what you mean.
Would you not, um, yeah.
I know your relative views, uh, President.
I saw Jerry earlier.
He stepping up.
He's playing his role.
Cut off the national television, extended different rest, shut down to his neighbors.
He embracing his political public. He arrested the head of the doctor for practicing.
These people aren't talking to me.
Okay, we'll begin again in about sixty seconds, in about a minute. Thank you.
What'd you say, three seconds?
All right, very good, bro.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, and I.
This is accurate.
I gotta mount the front, you know, the Biloxi on the front of it. There's no mounting.
Oh, I.
Yeah, I'm gonna bring it around. Just push your nut, you know.
Oh, then, all right. It goes pretty good.
Sicilian, right?
Carrie, you ready? Okay. Thank you. So we have a good St. Patrick's Day parade. I'm sure we will. At this point, we'll move to the, we have no departmental reports. We'll move to the council reports. Mr. Lawrence and Ward one.
Today is Irish day. Four coming from Giuseppe, Oh, Ronzo.
I try. You're good, you're good.
You gotta remember that.
I'm trying. Glad I'm on those, glad I'm on those, yeah.
Giuseppe.
It was great to see you. Fans, the stadium, that place is packed. Maybe we need to lease this thing out to Mississippi State. They had Mississippi State. They seem to bring five, six thousand D right on the floor.
It's not working.
Go ahead, you're good now.
Can you hear now?
That's perfect.
Do y'all miss all the good stuff I said earlier?
Yeah.
Don't say it again, though.
He believe you.
No wonder nobody said anything when I said Giuseppe. Huh? Oh, Ronzo. Bitch. That's what I said earlier. It was four different languages. Anyway, I thought, I was wondering why y'all didn't catch on to that. But anyway, just coming down the street to watch that many people walking in, it's great. They play again tomorrow night. It's a great thing. They light up, they lit up the, the power again, the lighthouse, you know, and it was green. So it's getting a lot of use. That's a good thing. It just makes it night parade. You gotta go back to Neptune and Mardi Gras Day. They said roughly seventy-five, eighty-thousand people. And even the chief said it's probably the quietest he's ever seen anything. Not that any trouble with that many people on two days. But that Saturday night, they packed this town. This place that you couldn't get anywhere. So that turned out to be a great thing. Of course, Kenny probably elaborated on a little bit more with the Neptune bunch. Mardi Gras Day, great parade, great weather, everything's fine. People, I mean, that's what's good about the City of Biloxi. We take care of everybody. Everybody wields and deals, has a great time. And if the chief keeps them in line, then we're in great shape. That's the report for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Guines, and Ward two.
Yeah, just want to echo what George said. We had a great week, great week with Mardi Gras. And the game is looking really good out there as I pass by. So thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Guines. Ms. Newman, and Ward three.
Yeah, so I'd just like to make a request. My team and I had worked really hard to invest in and fundraise for Hiller Park, and I would just like to ask that some of the bond money that we're gonna be getting goes into helping refurbish the bathrooms, the tennis courts, maybe even make pickleball courts, picnic tables. That park is highly used now, and it could be even more so, even like weddings and, you know, what have you. If we can really invest in that park, it's a beautiful piece of property that can really be utilized. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman, Mr. Demming, and Ward four.
Mike, we talked about the catch basin over at Moss Circle, Club Moss Circle. Did you ever look into that? Did someone out there to?
Which, which circle?
Club Moss Circle in Biloxi. We talked about the drainage. I told you there was a catch basin there. We looked up and saw that it was a property that looked privately owned on the GIS, and you were gonna send an engineer out to scope it?
Let me get back to you. I'm not sure what they did.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk after this. Then just.
We're talking about the area around the bluffs?
It's, it's before we get to the bluffs on Pops Ferry Road. It's, it's.
Well, we, we, what the, the last one that you and I talked about was two of the woods, Raven Woods, I think, or?
That, that was a paving issue, correct?
That's a paving job.
Same day we talked about that. We pulled up the GIS, and I showed you an area on the map. It looks like nothing but tree canopies, but there's a catch basin below it that looks like if we run some pipes out to the bay, just sort of let rainwater run off, it would help.
Oh, right, okay.
Yeah.
I, I know somebody went out there. I haven't seen a report. I'll, I'll correspond with you tomorrow.
Okay.
I know they went and looked.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Demming, Mr. Glavine, and Ward six.
Okay. Thank you. Just need to follow up on the loose in Lauren Falls, Taylor Oaks. Taylor Oaks had their homeowners association meeting last night, and Lauren Falls had three residents call me over the last couple of days just wanting an update. And I told them, we're working on it, but I need to give them maybe a little bit better answer than we're just working on it. They're tired of hearing that.
Right, that's the, the infamous one where the.
The bend in the pipe or the small pipe.
The bend in the ditch, and it overflows the ditch.
Yes, sir.
And they're supposed to be raising the size of that pipe. I don't think it's been done yet, though. Once again, as I said with Ward four, I'll get, get something to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Mike, can you CC me on those email exchanges about that project?
About the budget?
About the email exchanges about the project in Lauren Falls. Now that the word lines have changed, and I'll be involved moving forward. Thank you.
Couple of things I'd like to echo. What a fantastic two parades we had. The weather couldn't have been, been better. They were big, and the, the streets of Biloxi had the sound of children laughing and people hollering. And, and I think the chief, you reported very minimal incidents, you know, for Mardi, for big Mardi Gras parades like that. Also, shout out to the Coast Coliseum. They brought in one of the major entertainers, Morgan Waller. And, I mean, for a midweek concert, all the hotels were full, all the restaurants were pretty successful, and that's certainly a shot in the arm. The other thing, I do want to echo what's going on in Ukraine. It's very inspiring. Despite maybe the government, you know, the, the government and their leadership may have been controversial with some of their practices in the past. They're certainly digging in, and they're fighting like hell for their country. And it's real inspiring to see it, unlike the Afghanistan issue. So prayers certainly go out to those people that are taking up arms and they're defending their democracy, you know, against the Russian intrusion. And that'll conclude my report today.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Barrett, Ward seven.
I just, I would like to give a shout out to, to Chief Miller and Chief Davis. I had a situation pop up yesterday, and they got right on it, got it taken care of. Also, I'm in the process of building a house, and Jerry Krill's probably tired of me ringing his phone, asking questions, and he's been very helpful. I'm appreciative of that, appreciative of that. Prior to the meeting, Mayor, I met with Ms. Agarito, and she gave me a packet, and you're familiar with the speeding on Hudson Cron. I know that she talked to Chief Miller before the meeting as well. It's an ongoing issue, and it's with the, it's not just vehicles. It's these large trucks that are coming from Waste Management. And I don't know what the answer is, but I'm gonna give you this packet to, to look at. But we have to do something, or somebody's gonna end up getting killed. And, and we have done things. I'm not saying that, but, you know, I don't know what the answer is, but we have to find some type of solution to get these guys slowed down. I don't know what we can do, but whatever, you know, whatever we have to do, we need to look at taking those steps to, to make sure that those people in that area in Clear Springs, or not Clear Springs, but Crystal Springs is, is taken care of, and it's safe for them to be out in their yards. And other than that, just like everyone else, it was great to see everyone out having a great time. Streets packed. And there's a lot of places that you go for Mardi Gras, and you don't feel safe. And kudos to Chief Miller and his team for, for making, you know, it a fun, safe experience for everyone. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. I have just one item. On Wednesday night, tomorrow night, there's a Ward five meeting at the Donald Snyder Center on Pass Road at six o'clock. These ward meetings usually last about seventy-five minutes, give or take. And if you are unable to make it, they're usually videoed, and we'll put them up online. So if you can't make it tomorrow night, you'll be able to view it at your leisure, certainly by the weekend. That concludes the council reports. At this time, we move to the public agenda, and it's, it's that time for citizen comments. We'll allot up to forty-five minutes for total for citizens who wish to address the council or the administration. You're limited to three minutes per individual, and when you're recognized, if you'll come to the table right here, there's a microphone, there's a sign-in sheet. If you would, take a moment. Sign in with your name and address, and then state your name clearly so the, the council clerk can record your name accurately for the minutes. That being said, is there anybody on my left, your right, that wishes to address the council? Yes, ma'am? Yes, sir? I'm sorry.
My name is Gregory White, and I'm a resident of Ward seven, and thank you for your comments, Councilman Barrett. I appreciate that. Chief, thank you for stepping up patrols a little bit on Hudson Cron. It's Emerald Lake Estates. And I brought some photographs and a packet for everyone to look at, along with my friend and neighbors. So I'm gonna keep this short, and just hand out, hand this packet over to you, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Is there anybody else on my left? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm just gonna read this. My name is Liz Garido. To the city, to the Biloxi City Council members, we, the people from Emerald Lake Estates, have made several attempts to reach out to you for help with the high-speed limit in Hudson Cron Road in front of our neighborhood. Since February second, two thousand and twenty, we have made several appearances at the city hall meetings, been in constant contact with the police department, and had personal meetings with city council members. However, the solution that we have gotten after two years is twenty-five mile-per-hour signs, warning lights, and occasional police assistance a mile away from our neighborhood. Unfortunately, this measurement has not been solved our issue at all, and every day, our community has to face high speeders going up to seventy-five miles per hour in a twenty-five speed limit. Our main concern is that the farther solution offered to us is more signs and white lines painted on the pavement. Measurements that we all know are going to take more time from the city, and as the warning lights and signs already installed are going to be ignored by high speeders. We require a more drastic solution after all this time. The reason why we are being so persistent on this issue is because we have elders, veterans, childrens, and families that are at risk. If you come and take a look at our community, can see this is a very narrow road, and we have eighteen-wheelers going seventy-five miles per hour, as fast as the interstate. That's why we have come together to strongly require from the City of Biloxi to install rumble strips and speed bumps on Hudson Cron Road in front of our neighborhood. There is a straight path and safe place where it can be installed in the attachment, and rumble strips and signs toward drivers of a speed bump ahead. It's signed by the residents of Emerald Lake Estates. So here with me, Major and city council members, I have some pictures of the accidents. We have a person that was actually killed on that road because of the high speed. He was a motorcyclist. There is being cars running off the road in front of our front yard. There are neighbors that are parking their trucks, obstructing their, their houses because they are afraid, they are afraid to be crashed at night. And our mailboxes are being hit constantly. We want to thank the police because they've been assisting us, and they've been doing their best. There is not a safe place for them to park near our residents, so they have to park a mile away. And as soon as they pass the police, they start raising their speed again. So that's our main concern. This is our request. There is some graphic of the rumble strips and the speed bumps. And I have dozens.
at the city hall meetings, been in constant contact with the police department, and had personal meetings with city council members. However, the solution that we have gotten after two years is twenty-five mile-per-hour signs, warning lights, and occasional police assistance a mile away from our neighborhood. Unfortunately, this measurement has not been solved our issue at all, and every day our community has to face high speeders going up to seventy-five miles per hour in a twenty-five speed limit. Our main concern is that the farther solution offered to us is more signs and white lines painted on the pavement. Measurements that we all know are going to take more time from the city, and as the warning lights and signs already installed are going to be ignored by high speeders. We require a more drastic solution after all this time. The reason why we are being so persistent on this issue is because we have elders, veterans, childrens, and families that are at risk. If you come and take a look at our community, can see this is a very narrow road, and we have eighteen-wheelers going seventy-five miles per hour, as fast as the interstate. That's why we have come together to strongly require from the city of Biloxi to install rumble strips and speed bumps on Hudson Cronin Road in front of our neighborhood. There is a straight path and safe place where it can be installed in the attachment, and rumble strips and signs toward drivers of a speed bump ahead. It's signed by the residents of Emerald Lake Estates. So here with me, um, Major and city council members, I have some pictures of the accidents. We have a person that was actually killed on that road because of the high speed. He was a motorcyclist. Um, there is being cars running off the road in front of our front yard. There are neighbors that are parking their trucks, obstructing their, their houses because they're afraid, they're afraid to be crashed at night. And our main boxes are being hit constantly. We want to thank the police because they've been assisting us, and they've been doing their best. There is not a safe place for them to park near our, uh, residence, so they have to park a mile away. And as soon as they pass the police, they start, uh, raising their speed again. So that's our main concern. This is our, um, request. There is some graphic of the rumble strips and the speed bumps. And I have dozens of signatures here with me of people that have signed.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campino. Is there anybody else on my left, your right, that would like to address the council or address the administration?
The, uh, flashings.
Anybody on my right, your left? Mr. Wheeler.
Yes. David Wheeler, one eighty-five Main Street, Biloxi. Um, I'm here on behalf of the People's Bank on item five C on your consent agenda, uh, and I'll be available to answer any questions you might have about it when that comes up. Uh, as you know, it's in the Kivett Street Development District from when Kivett Street was widened, uh, and it involves some property that the People's Bank foreclosed about eight years ago. Portions of the property that's being sold, uh, came from the city as a result of excess property left over from the widening, and those pieces of property have covenants on it that restricts the transfer of the property, um, until improvements are built on it, which has never been done. Um, it was owned by church. At one point, they sold it to Torjuson Gaming Group when they were gonna develop the casino on Kivett Street, and came to the council and got consent to convey the property to them, and, uh, that obviously folded, and, uh, the bank foreclosed, and they've been trying to sell the property for the last eight years. So now they have a buyer that wants to build something on that, uh, piece of property and get some development going. So I'll be available for questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Anybody else on my right, your left? Last call. Anybody in the, in the council chambers wish to address the council or the administration? All right, that concludes citizens' comments. We now move to the policy agenda. If the clerk would read item A, please.
Ordinance to amend appropriate sections of the land development ordinance to provide corrections to table twenty-three, four-one-C use table, non-residential and planned development districts.
Okay, the motion was made by Mr. Lawrence and a second by Mr. Barrett. Mr. Krill, there may be some questions if you, if you'd like to step up. Mr. Lawrence, any comments or concerns about this item?
No. Jerry, you could, uh, sit down and explain exactly what we're doing, what was changed, if anything was changed.
Yes, sir.
Or we just adjusted.
Well, this is, this is not a text change in any way. What it is, is, uh, as we were going through the LDO, which we're doing now, going through, looking for errors, we noticed that at the end of the chart, uh, in the area that addressed, uh, regulated uses, that the footnote out on the end was in the wrong order. So all we're doing is correcting those footnotes to put them into the right order. The text was correct. It's just that, you know, where, like where there was a B, it should have been a C. So all this is, is a housekeeping item to correct those footnotes.
Mr. Barrett, any questions?
No, sir.
Any questions or comments by the council on this item? There being none, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the ordinance? This is the second reading now. All in favor of the ordinance is presented. It's approved on a seven-o vote. Thank you. Brings us to the next item under Resolutions, item B. If the clerk would read that item, please.
Resolution to appoint a president of the Biloxi City Council.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Of course.
Motion by, was that Ms. Newman? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Barrett. Any discussion? Ms. Newman, comments? Mr. Barrett, anything? Any questions or comments? There being none, all in favor of the resolution is presented? All opposed? Wasn't a whole lot said, but, uh, I am no longer the president of council. Let, let the partying begin, and I'm handing the gavel to Mr. Glavine.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Tisdale. Uh, it's always great to serve with you and, and the rest of our councilmen and, and councilwomen and councilpersons. Uh, I just want to say this, uh, before we move on to the rest of the agenda. We got a lot of work to still be done, uh, a lot of things that are coming up, a lot of things that are in the work. You see the transformational, uh, endeavors in and throughout the city of Biloxi. Uh, we have budgets that will come up, uh, in the next eight months. We'll be reviewing those and, and getting that timetable, and, uh, we'll do it with our due diligence and, and our fierce commitment for the citizens of Biloxi. So with that, uh, we'll move on to the next item.
Resolution to appoint a vice president of the Biloxi City Council.
Entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilman Tisdale.
Second.
Second by Councilman Lawrence. Any discussion, Mr. Tisdale?
Uh, no. Mr. Gines, uh, feel, and, and as appropriate as it is, with the middle initial of O, Felix O. Gines becomes vice president of council tonight. He's a good man. Yeah, we do. Same barber. Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lawrence.
How could you get better than that? Another Irishman. Don't you love it? You've got enough Croatian than I'll.
I hear you. Any, any, uh, other discussion on the council before we vote? All in favor? Those opposed? Congratulations, Mr. O. Gines. All right, next item.
Resolution denying a request for a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning for two properties from RM thirty, high-density multifamily residential, to CB community business for property located at one thirty-three Briarfield and an unaddressed parcel behind one forty-five Briarfield.
All right, this motion, uh, was made by Mr. Tisdale, and I think it was seconded by Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah. Uh, at, at this time, I'd appreciate the support of the council in, um, denying this request for a zone map amendment, um, for this development. Uh, that would be in line with the recommendation from the Planning Commission. Um, and I'd appreciate your support on this. Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence?
I agree with, uh, Mr. Tisdale. Now, El Presidente, so I, I recommend, just like he does, to deny it, this ordinance.
Okay. Mr. Gines, any comment?
Yeah, I want to ask Mr. Krill.
Microphone, Felix.
Ms. Krill, um, you know, what was the, um, the vibe, I guess, and, and the, uh, did the planning commission support, uh, deny it or support it, and what were their reasons?
The vote was, the vote was seven to five, and I believe that probably the concerns of some of the neighbors played a role in that. Also, uh, you know, the concern about, uh, moving the CB zoning further to the north may have played a role in it, but the vote, the vote was very close. It was seven to five.
Seven to five. Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Newman?
What's changed? Why, why is it coming back up?
Well, if you'll recall, that a couple of times, this has been on the council agenda, and the applicant who's represented here today, he has some representatives that, uh, if the council wishes, they'd like to speak.
Please do.
Have asked that it be tabled a couple of times, and, uh, the last time was a, a little over a month ago, and they've asked that it be put back on the agenda today. So, uh, either they, they weren't ready before, uh, or they were waiting on new information, but they're back today, so.
Okay, I'd like to hear from him.
Russell Gill, attorney, representing Mr. Frank Zhang. Uh, we appeared about a month or so ago, uh, and asked for a, a continuance, as we call it in court, to allow some expert review of the project and, and have that, uh, expert review presented to you. I do want to remind you of some of the things that we talked about last time, and that is that, uh, the character of the particular neighborhood has substantially changed, and there is a public need for this rezoning. And the reason for that is that, uh, much of the area is transformed in accordance with tourism. Mr. Zhang's property is only one block from the beach. It is much closer to the beach than much of the surrounding property that is already zoned CB, as far north as the railroad tracks. Uh, the majority of the surrounding property is already zoned multifamily or CB. The two properties on the beachfront directly south of Mr. Zhang's property, Motel Six and South Surf Style, are zoned CB. With the exception of a few areas, the property to the east and west is zoned CB to the railroad tracks, and in some cases, either farther, even farther north than the tracks. Also, the RV pack, RV park to the east of Mr. Zhang's property was rezoned CB. And if Mr. Zhang's property were rezoned, it would essentially align with the RV park's, uh, property line. To the east, the Coliseum is zoned CB, all the way back to the railroad tracks, and to the west, and Edgewater property is zoned regional business to the railroad tracks. So, in, in, in essence, we're asking you to rezone this property to the same level of already, that it's already basically transformed into. And I read a excerpt from a case, the Luder case, and for the record, I'm gonna give you the citation. That's five twenty-nine Southern Second, six twenty-five nineteen eighty-eight, Luder versus Hammond. And this is where our Supreme Court basically addressed how city councils, boards of supervisors should go about looking at rezoning. And, and this is what they said. This is another of the many cases where in recent years, we have recognized the duty of municipal zoning authorities acting legislatively to, quote, "look out the window," end quote, and act on the basis of, of what they see happening in their community. Now, we have with us, uh, the expert we talked about, Mr. Lebatard, Michael Lebatard, architect. And he has prepared some information, I think, that will help you in your final decision on this issue. I'd like him to approach the, uh, the bench, please.
You'd, uh, state, state your full name so the clerk can record it for us, please.
Sure. Michael A. Lebatard, and the address is three eleven East View Drive.
Bring the microphone a little bit closer.
Can I request we get a podium so I can stand? Oh, I've prepared a couple of, um, of video diagrams to try to explain what we're talking about and present the project to you in a visual sense so that you can really get a good understanding of what we're talking about. This Google shot here, I don't know if you can make it any bigger than that. Okay. The, the box or the L-shaped area right there is the subject property. Uh, you can see the number of homes there. You can see its location in vicinity of the beach. You can see it's wooded area there to the east of it, as well as some to the north of it. So that begins where the property is located. Just across the street to the east is an apartment complex that Mr. Zhang built two to three years ago. It's been there now. Uh, it is under conditional use where they were allowing him to use it as a short-term piece of property. Uh, the property is extremely well-maintained, and if we can go to some more of the videos, this is, uh, I'm having a hard time standing and not talking about. This is the zoning area that's surrounding that property. The white was SP is the subject property we're talking about. If you notice, all of the CB is surrounding almost the entire residential development, if you will, there around the RM thirty, a high density. That particular subject property that we're looking at, he by right can build the forty-eight apartment units without any question. Um, that has, the plans have already been there and been approved. One of the things that he's looking at is to try to get that particular property, rather than going for conditional use, to try to get it rezoned or an extension of the CB into that area in order to be able to use it as a short term. Now, why do we want to use it as a short term? It's basically, he's a good businessman, and he's looking at what we're trying to do there. I don't know if a lot of people understand that Keesler Air Force Base housing capacity is at a hundred percent. What Keesler has been doing, Keesler has been going out to facilities such as the one that we're seeing on Briarfield that's already built there, and what they're doing is they're renting these units for students who are here training. So it's not like it's a transient that's gonna come in and stay for a day or two, although that could occur, but it's more long-term, two to three weeks, close to a month, where these trainees are finding a place to be able to stay and house themselves. Now, has the character of the neighborhood changed? We have to ask ourselves, has it changed? In August two thousand and five, it definitely changed. With Hurricane Katrina coming into play, we lost a lot of residences in that area. We lost a lot of commercial properties in that area, and frankly, uh, West Biloxi is somewhat hurting for development in that area. It's lucky that we've got a project like the Briarfield that's already there, that has been maintained immaculately. It's a good neighbor. It's a friendly to the neighbor, and the occupants there are the occupants that you'd want to seek. Of course, we see other development in that area, the RV park, which is a, is a great development and asset to that park, where it's extended up as, as a CB as well. One of the reasons why we're looking at the character of the neighborhood has changed and why such a commercial project would really work in that area, one of it has got to do with the lack of development coming back into the area residential-wise. Some commercial is coming back, but we have to look at one factor, the cost of insurance. You all know about FEMA two-point-oh, eighteen percent increases in flood insurance. So it's forcing the residential to withdraw back north as much as they can away from the water. Well, you say, "Why is commercial?" Commercial is a piece of property that's actually gaining revenue and producing revenue. They can, they can pay the additional cost of the insurance that's being required by FEMA. When we look at zoning and changing zoning and spot zoning, what the professional planner's gonna look at is whether he's going to place a zone in the middle of something between two residences or in a residential area that's going to be disruptive to that area. What they look at is the, the extension of a zoning, the extension of a zoning. It's a natural way to move it. And you look at the area, we've had some comments that they're landlocked and they can't get to the east. Well, there's nothing there to get them to the east at all, or, I mean, towards the west, excuse me, going towards the west. The other factor is that the green area right there, right across the street, exactly right across the street, has already been zoned, or he's been already granted, uh, a short-term lease in that area. So why not on the other side of the street? I'll also point out to you, just below, to the south, there's an apartment complex there, which is two apartments. Unit B is a short-term rental. You go just north of his property, within fifty feet to a hundred feet, they're building two new homes. The third home that's there that's already built is a short-term rental. You go north up the road on Briarfield, there are three more residences that are granted short-term rental. So the question is, why can we not get this particular area to a short-term rental when we have that all the way around? It's a natural area to do it. It's close to the water. It's not protruding anything, and it's not dividing When I looked at the minutes from the planning commission, there are approximately seventy-three homes in that subdivision. Three people are against and oppose the project. Three people, that's less than five percent. And I'm here with you tonight, when I was waiting to listen to any comments and the opposition to this tonight, and we heard none. And I understand that the councilman, in your position, in leadership position, you have to weigh the good and the bad. With this project, he's gone, I can show you some of the pictures of it. It, it's, let him, let him, I want to show you the quality of the project that's been there for two years.
Mr. Lebatard? Mr. Lebatard, while they're bringing those photos up, I, I do have a comment. Uh, did, did I understand last time we had discussions on this, that you were willing to bring the property up to the same code as a hotel would?
That, that is correct. If it is allowed to be a CB, then what the occupants is gonna go to is an F1, which is for hotels. The construction of the ho, that, if it was constructed as a hotel, it would have to be brought up to the existing building codes for a hotel. It already has sprinkler systems in it at this time, but we will have to go back and make some modifications to those plans, which we're willing to do, in order to meet the requirements of the fire department and the city and the building codes, in order for us to be able to meet that particular requirement.
Director Creel, is there anything in this that requires that, or, or that's just a handshake, or?
That's, uh, I have, uh, agreed with the fire department. If we're gonna review, if, if the theme, building is untitled, then it's gonna be reviewed or permitted.
Uh, I understand that, but is this, as it is written now in the four corners of this resolution, is that required for them to do that, or not?
There is, there is one aspect, uh, we went through.
We went through the, uh, the fire code and the building code today, and there's not really that much difference between what is required for an apartment complex and what is required for a hotel. Both require sprinklers, uh, both are limited to three stories in height, this stick-built construction. But our code of ordinances, our code of ordinances does say that, uh, if it's being built as short-term rental, then they would have to wire everything in conduit. So, that's the biggest difference, and that's an expensive difference, yes.
Okay, alright.
And continue on with my presentation. As you can see, this unit, this apartment complex, has been there for over two years. It's maintained quite well. Uh, they even put in brick pavers to alleviate some of the drainage issues. Can you go to some more, please? As you can see today, these pictures was taken today. They've landscaped it, the grass is cut, it's clean, there's no trash on the property. It's an asset project. The man takes care of the projects, his properties, and I think that's, that's, that's an asset to that area. It's not a hostile envi, environment coming into the neighborhood, but I think it's one that is very favorable to the neighborhood. Um, I know that some of the neighbors are concerned about, you know, motorcycle gangs and coming in, but this is not the attempt of what that is. If you can understand that these are military students, most of them that are there.
I think we understand that. Uh, Mr. Demming has a question.
I didn't, I just, when you were asking those questions, I just wanted to remind the council that this actually is regarding the zoning. After, if we do change the zoning, am I correct in assuming he still has to come back for a conditional permit, or, uh, conditional approval? He does not, he has the absolute right?
Not under CB.
Okay.
If you change the zoning to CB, then it would be allowed as a use by right. But you, like, the property is already zoned RM thirty, uh, which allows short-term rental as a conditional use. So, the council has some options here to approve the zoning as, as what they're requesting, or you, uh, can deny it, or you can downgrade it to conditional use.
Director Creel, I, I just was in the, I was, I was, my attempt was to put at rest the issue of compliance with the building codes, but you satisfied that, and so I didn't need to make the statement regardless, so thank you.
Okay.
I guess that fairly much concludes what I wanted to say. If there's any questions that I can answer for you, I'll be glad to answer them for you.
I'll have some comments when they're done.
Oh, I'm sorry. The one other thing that's, one other thing, excuse me, is part of the project is that we're going to have a ten-foot buffer zone running between, down the property lines, that's going to be a vegetated area, trees, landscaping, to try to give a buffer from any residential property lines that we'll butt. That's in the plans now.
Is that, is that, uh, ongoing? Is that specified, that, that, that'll be a special easement or buffer zone? Or could you come back later and decide to do something, or do away with it? It's important, if you're saying you're putting a buffer zone in, I, I just want to understand, is that temporary, or, or permanent, or how, how do we?
It would be permanent, and if there is an easement required by the city department to, to memorialize that, we're willing to do that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Alright, any other comments?
I have a couple of observations and maybe a few questions, Mr. Lebatard. Um, the history of this community, Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, of this particular subdivision is, is this used to be part of the county, and when this Briarfield subdivision, many years ago, and, and at some point it was annexed by the city. And, and the point I'm trying to get to is, when it was annexed by the city, as I recall, you tried to match up the zoning as, as best possible with the, the city's zoning standards, correct?
Yes, sir. What we do whenever, uh, property comes into the city and annexation, if there's already a use on it, then we'll try to tie the zoning that closely matches up with that use to the property. If the property is undeveloped, then it will usually come in as agricultural or, or some type of residential.
So, what's unique about this neighborhood, there are two main streets running north and south. One is Briarfield to the west, and the other is Pine Grove to the east. And, uh, Pine Grove is pretty much residential on both sides of the street. There's a little commercial there, uh, the first block of the beach. On Briarfield, as you proceeded north from the beach, you've got some commercial, you've got some, uh, residential, you have an apartment complex, you have, uh, like an eight-plex at some point apartments, you have a three-plex of apartments. And in, in the diagram that, um, looks like this, I've scribbled on it, in our packet, with the, uh, property that is currently zoned residential multifamily for these two acres, I think it's two parcels. Um, and I appreciate Mr. Lebatard's comments, but all of those properties, uh, to the east, west, and north are zoned residential. Residential's single-family or residential multifamily. What's south of that is community business. And, in fact, when, um, this developer, Mr. Zhang, who's a nice guy, by the way, when he built his apartment on the, apartment complex on the east side of Briarfield, I think it's thirty or thirty-six units. The original intent was that they would be long-term rental units, and then at the eleventh hour, a request was made for a conditional use. And my understanding was that some of those units, but not all of them, would be used for short-term rentals. But my understanding is based on the wording of the resolution, basically the entire complex. So, those thirty or thirty-six units, how many units there are, are there, are now short-term rentals.
That's correct.
So, I think it's, is it thirty-six units there, Mr. Zhang? Thirty units, okay. So, you have thirty units there, and are all of them used for short-term rent? And you may want to get near your microphone, Mr. Zhang. Mr. Zhang, thank you.
We only have, uh, to begin with, we only do like two or three to try it out. Now, we are in the peak, we have about twenty off thirty is short-term rental. And we have ten long-term tenants, they stay, they stay there, great people, we want to keep. If they want to stay, they can stay there.
Right, if they were to leave, my assumption is that you would look at short-term rental for those empty apartments.
Yes, if they like to stay, they can stay, uh, you know, uh, we have great residents. We got some, like travelers and mandatory people staying there, and they are great people, and we, we love our residents over there.
Thank you, Mr. Zhang. So, currently, on Briarfield alone, there are twenty-seven short-term rentals. This development that's proposed, that we're looking at this rezoning, would be, I think, for another forty-eight units.
That's correct.
So, then you'd have seventy-five short-term rentals in this neighborhood, and I, I think Mr. Lebatard said we have seventy, we have seventy-three residential single-family homes there, basically. Um, so, this has the residents concerned. If Mr. Zhang wanted to, uh, build apartments there, forty-eight units, not, no problem, he wouldn't, we wouldn't be here right now, he could build long-term rental units, absolutely no problem. Um, will, will these units in fact be used for short-term rentals, all forty-eight? Or will some be long-term rental units?
It very do depend on the supply and demand. I mean, we, we like to get, uh, approval for zoning change. That way, we have option to short-term and long-term. I mean, to be honest, to, to begin with, we don't know how short-term, how well it goes. So, that's why we're only apply two or three to begin with. It take about, what, three years? Two current now, which twenty off thirty is occupied by short-term rental. And it very do provide by demand, but the one thing, uh, for sure, I, based on previous discussion we have, only different between short-term and long-term, and it's going to be same, traffic count will not change. Water use will be same thing, it's just depending personal behavior. And what I'm ensuring you, with the short-term tenant, they, they were able to pay hundred-dollar night or hundred-and-fifty-dollar night compared to regular long-term tenant paying thirty-dollar night. And, and another thing is, those is a quality, I mean, those is good tenant. I mean, tenant, short-term and long-term, I do not think it affect anybody around it, just different people, whether long-term resident or short-term resident, but they're all good people. And another thing, if you approve us as a short-term rental, we have to make a better building as Mr. Creel requests. He said, look, he had to put the conduit line, he had to do a lot of extra stuff, which only make building better. It, it make us invest more and make whole neighborhood more beautiful and nicer. And buffer zone, green area, all the design, and we definitely want to make a whole neighborhood better, not worse.
Thank you, Mr. Zhang. Anything else, Mr. Tuesday?
I have a few more comments, thank you, a few more questions. Mr. Creel, if we're, since the plans are for forty-eight units, if these are short-term rentals and, and the construction would be so that it, it, uh, is that of a, I guess the standard of that is a motel sprinkled and so forth.
That's true.
Um, how many parking spaces would be required? Since they're being used as short-term rentals, is that based on the number of bedrooms in each unit? Uh, so many, so many parking spots per bedroom, for some reason, I think that's the standard.
In the, in the, uh, short-term rental, if, if this gets approved, and it is used for short-term rental, then they would have to provide one parking space for each bedroom in each unit, yes.
Right, so that's four, if they're all two bedrooms, they'll need to be ninety-six, or one forty-eight, or whatever. Will there be a restaurant, a bar, or a nightclub on the premises? All of which are permitted in the community business?
No, sir.
Okay. Um, the planning commission noted, when they heard this matter, that having determined that said zoning change was unwarranted due to no plausible argument of mistake in original zoning, nor change in the character of the neighborhood with an established community need for the zoning change and uses requested. Um, I know that you had mentioned Hurricane Katrina, well, that, that changed life for every, everybody. And I think, uh, in fact, I think the land ordinances were all revised after Katrina, so that would have been taken into account at that time. The, uh, there was a petition circulated by residents, and I think the signatures were turned in at the planning commission meeting. And I've heard from several residents, and the concern, the concern is, long-term rentals, not a problem. Residential in nature, people that they live by, many of them purchase these homes in a residential area, and as they're observing, it's slowly going commercial as these commercial zones creep northward. So, I, I, I would tell you that based on my experience with the residents in that neighborhood, most of them do not want short-term rentals there. I may have a comment later if there's further discussion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Barrett?
Just for clarification, if this is approved, he is required to bring this basically to a hotel standard, other than the wire has to be in conduit, is that what you said? That's correct, yes, sir. That's the only question I have.
Anyone else?
A couple things. You said that seventy-three people lived in a neighborhood? And you said three of them, three of them come and spoke against? How many spoke for it?
There was no one there. We have, we understand from the, from the document.
You said seventy-three came and spoke against it, so nobody came and spoke for it?
Nobody spoke against it here tonight, but there was only three people that showed up to the planning council to speak against it with some petitions, which we have not been able to find.
And a couple other questions, you said about the buffer zone, these different things you said, is this written anywhere? All this stuff that you can't have a nightclub, is it written, you're not gonna put a nightclub?
As what I said, that we can memorialize that, easement if it's needed.
Written in the ordinance? Is it, all has to be written? Making statements don't mean anything. This stuff has to be written?
I, I understand that, that's why I meant, I spoke to Mr. Glavine and said we will memorialize that in a document with the city as part of that plat.
So, I mean, those, you know, we make all these statements, these meetings and stuff, that don't mean anything, do you write it somewhere?
I agree with you. We're certainly in agreement with that.
I, thank you. Alright, anyone else? Call for the question. I believe we do have it, we do have it, thank you. Alright, we're, I'm gonna call for the question. This is a vote to deny, uh, this application, uh, for short-term rentals, or, I'm sorry, for the zoning. Uh, CB, correct? Okay. All in favor to deny? All in favor to not deny? Okay. Resolu, the motion fails. Alright, next? Nope.
Do we need to make a movement to pass it?
So, we don't have one of those on here? Alright, well, the, the chair entertained a motion to, uh, approve.
I'll make, I'll second that.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Alright, the, the motion was made by Councilman Barrett, and it was seconded, seconded by Councilman Demming. Discussion?
None.
Uh, what are you exactly approving?
What, you just voted to deny?
I know that, but you, so you're approving all that he said, all they said they're gonna do? Is that written in this? No, it's not.
Okay.
So, I'm trying to explain to y'all, I mean.
Uh, Councilman Lawrence, you're, you're correct.
Vote what you want, but.
You're, you're correct, so, uh, is there an addition or, uh, to this, uh, measure to ensure that it, there's, uh, memorializes this action for the, for the easement?
I'll make an amendment to include the buffer zone, and that no nightclub can be built on it.
Okay, and what will happen, what will happen if the council goes forward with this approval? This project has to go back to the DRC. The DRC proved it to the level of their authority before it went to the planning commission, but they're not able to sign off on it until after the council approves it, so those things can be incorporated into the.
Thank you for your clarification, Director.
I'll second this amendment. Major's amendment.
Is this an amendment you're offering, or?
If we need to do that, to where.
I think, I think what he's saying is, even though it says to go back, they made representations to the council that they would be in favor of a restrictive covenant, so.
So, when DRC gets it, if they, they'll put it in there, and then it'll come back to us to.
With those things in it.
Okay, it'd be appropriate for you to say, I, I move that it go to CB with the understanding that there will be no certain types of businesses there.
Alright, you got that, Mr. Barrett? Alright, you still hold on your second, Mr. Demming?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
What do we, can you read that amendment? I'm not sure I understand what the amendment is. Alright, so, so.
We're voting on approving what we deny, the.
So, you're approving a rezoning to community business from RM thirty to CB?
What I, what I was saying is, he could have a, that approval could be contingent upon memorializing an appropriate restrictive covenant based on the representations that were made here tonight. It could be within the overall approval. It may not just be a bar, there's probably other businesses that they would acknowledge shouldn't be there, that would be allowable under CB, so.
Yeah, this, this will come back to us, and we'll, we'll have another shot to review it before it, it becomes final. Alright?
Well, that's, I don't think that's accurate.
No, I, I think, I think once it goes to CB. No, I, I think, I think once it goes to CB, it's, it's to CB, and then you say, I'm at CB, and nobody appealed from that. Uh, the time to put a conditional restriction on the CB would be now, as part of the granting of the CB.
So, so the motion would read, I assume, that the rezoning from RM thirty to CB would be approved with the provisos, that there would be no nightclub, and that there would be a ten-foot vegeta- vegetative buffer? That be accurate?
Yes, that's on Roger.
Okay, if you change the zoning, you can't put conditions on there as part of the zoning change because it then becomes contract zoning. Uh, now, what we can do is to make sure that he writes covenants on the site plan that's going to be approved. And if those, uh, covenants are on there showing that he's not going to put in any type of, uh, commercial development like we've talked about, uh, then, then we would have a, kind of a leg to stand on there. However, the other part of it is, if he comes to us with a set of building construction plans, which would be the next step, if we see that there's anything commercial in there, then I will bring that back to the city council. Anything other than the units that are proposed to be built.
Well then, could you also, uh, just table the, uh, the exact zoning request? It's been, the motion to deny was refused.
Right.
Could you table the exact zoning change until you get the covenants?
Well, the, the, the problem is, is that the DRC is not able to act, to, to do their final act until after the council approves it. Now, the, the code itself already requires the buffer strip to go in, because anytime you're putting in a commercial development against a residential development, there's a requirement for a buffer strip to go in, so that part, we're already on solid ground with. On the, the commercial uses, uh, what we'd have to do is to make sure that there's nothing on the site plan that showed that, you know, they're proposing a restaurant or a bar or anything like that. Uh, and, and again, they're gonna have to submit the actual construction plans. There's, there's three buildings proposed for this property. There are two apartment buildings that each have twenty-four units in it, and then there is an office building, uh, in the front for the manager.
So, uh, the intent of Councilman Barrett's measure is to approve this action to rezone with DRC ensuring that there are certain covenants as we discussed tonight.
We will, yes, we will make sure that those go on to the, uh, the final approved site plan, yes.
Okay. All right, everybody, everybody clear now?
Now, let me ask Peter a question. You turn this into a commercial piece of property, which y'all just did, how you gonna stop anything from being built there? You don't have the right or the law to stop somebody from building whatever they want on a commercial piece of property. You just turn it into a commercial property. You got forty-eight commercial short term rentals, that's commercial property. Call it CB, that's CB, that's commercial property. It's all because you can't sell, you can't build this, you can't build that, you can't build that. It's a commercial piece of property. You're gonna have to fight the law to do that.
Yeah.
If, if he comes in with anything other than what we've talked about, he's still gonna have to go back to DRC to present that, and if it's something that was not included here, then, uh, DRC does not have to approve that, that site plan, so.
But, but if it goes back to DRC, I mean, as it stands now, if I understand it correctly, we'll never see this before us again. It either passes DRC after this with what was said here today, or it doesn't. And it would not until, uh, what was discussed today was presented and included in the site plan for DRC.
That's great, if he, if he goes back to DRC and he designs it exactly the way that we've talked about today, uh, is significantly the way that it was presented originally when it came in, then it would not come back to the city council unless we see that there's changes in it, and then I would make sure that we bring it back to the city council.
I'll, I'll ask Peter the same question, you cannot stop him from building something on a commercial piece of property. You're gonna have to go to court, they could sue you, they could do what they want. If you jumbled it CB, you turned that into commercial property, which the guy was right, it's pretty much landlocked. You're gonna have forty-eight short term rentals in there. You, you got a major problem. He might not do it, but he could do it, and you can't stop him from doing it. Can't do it.
Okay, anyone else have any discussion? Yeah, Mr. Deming?
No, I, Mr. Shambra, I saw you moving around, I, I thought maybe you wanted, you had something to add.
Whenever you have a zoning case, you're looking at the zoning the way it reads in the book. And if it's a permitted use, we have no control over stopping that.
Right.
So you've opened a door to allow them to do a lot more than just so many units for short term rental. Because CB is a very extensive commercial classification. If it would remain what it is now, when it come back for a conditional use approval, you can put a whole slew of conditions on that, but that's not what you're doing. Just food for thought.
Thank you.
For that particular parcel. But again, that's why we have a zoning code, that's why we print it as the volume and say, these are your permitted, these are your conditional, those are where they use as a red. And we don't have a lot of control over that.
Thank you.
Again, if there are changes, it still has to go back to DRC for those changes. He just can't go in and build whatever he wants to, he has to build in full compliance with the code. And the first stop on any change is the DRC committee. So we do still have some measures in here to, to checks and balances.
Legally, the DRC can't stop him either, Jerry. They're, they're not a law-abiding thing, they're just a board, they're a sounding board. They have no right to stop anybody that they can get sued on. And it's right, I mean, when you change the zone.
We stop projects all the time, Mr. Lawrence.
You can do it, but you can get sued either. You can't stop them from building, once it's permitted, it's permitted. And you know that better than anybody.
All right, so, eh, I, I think this is becoming more clouded. You know, what I'm hearing is, if there's no conditional use provision with this and we pass this zoning, then they got carte branche on the plans that they have today. They can do everything they want with the plans that they have today with no changes, anything that we discussed here, if we say we're gonna give you this zoning.
Again, if you approve the zoning change, it will go back to DRC. And DRC will compare it with the original site plan that was presented when they came in before they went to the planning commission. And as long as this is in compliance with that, with the, you know, the buffer strips and everything that we've talked about, then they, the, uh, DRC will sign off on it and the project will move forward. And the next step would be that they would submit construction plans to us. But if they change anything about it, then the DRC is not going to sign off on it.
If they change anything such as, I'm putting in a bar, or I'm doing anything else, that's what you're inferring?
Because that's not, was, was originally approved. The DRC, after they review a, a case at site, for site plan, they don't have the authority to sign off, so they write a recommendation letter that we've reviewed the site plan and we've approved it to the level of our authority. We recommend that it goes to the planning commission and the city council for the final consideration and approvals. That's the way that it works. Then, after it's approved by the council, it comes back to DRC for them to put the final signatures on it based on what was discussed and what was approved.
Okay, Director, uh, as we vote on this, if it, uh, goes through, would I ask that you, for this particular case, keep us informed?
Absolutely.
Exactly on any of the details or developments?
Absolutely, I will do that, yeah.
Any other discussion before we call for the question?
Just one, one comment. These people, all these boards cannot override the city council. The city council's at the laws of the city, that's the way it works. They can make all the statements they want, that board, the planning commission, nobody else can override the city council.
Correct.
Period. So going back to the board, that don't mean anything. We gotta pass it or not pass it? Remember, we have the, the law-setting body to do that, only we do. The mayor don't, the lawyer don't, they don't, us. So running back to these boards don't mean anything. It all decides on what y'all wanna do up here. And in this case, y'all pass the five or two, fine, that's what we living with.
All right, final thoughts, any other?
Yes, um, going back to Mr. Lawrence's point and, uh, Mr. Shambra's comments and, and Mr. Creel's comments, if you decide today to approve rezoning from RM thirty to community business CB, Mr. Dang could sit on this property for a year and then say, you know, I've changed my mind. I wanna build something else that's compatible in CB, whatever that might be. All right, we've already rezoned it, that's to Mr. Lawrence's point. You go in, uh, I, I'm, I don't know off the top of my head some of the more, uh, I guess, uses in community business, I, I think nightclub was one, it may be some sort of entertainment or anything. Remember, uh, this is surrounded by all residential, residentially zoned property. At least, as Mr. Shambra said, if, if you didn't approve this, left it at RM thirty, Mr. Dang could come back, ask for a conditional use, you'd have more control over what goes in there with conditional use than you do now, but once you rezoned commercially, Mr. Dang could sell it tomorrow. We don't know who, what the next owner's gonna put in there. I mean, that's always bothered me about this rezoning, you, you take everybody at their word and then due to circumstances, things happen, and whoever purchased it originally has now sold it, and no telling what they wanna put there with whatever's permitted in that, in that commercial zone. So just be very careful with what, with your vote today, is, is all I'm saying, thank you.
All right, anyone that have any careful remarks before we vote on this? Okay, call for the question, all in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
Resolution declaring the intention to issue general obligation bonds in the amount of seventeen million dollars.
I'm.
All right, moved by Mr. Lawrence, do we have a second? All right, seconded by Mr. Gines, discussion, Mr. Lawrence.
I would like to call for a workshop. This thing is written so well that we don't exactly know what we're doing. And I just, and I don't wanna hear the thing, we have to pass it today, we cut the bond market, gonna change. I need to find out, first of all, that we need seventeen million, or we need twelve million, and what we spending the money on? How many projects we planning on doing? Where the project's gonna be? And maybe we don't want all these projects done. My goal is to have a workshop, you to find out what you planning on doing right off the bat? They don't call seventeen million, they pick up them little fields at, uh, the park. So anyway, my request is that we have a workshop and everybody can put in their input completely.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Gines?
Yeah, I just wanted to know what kinda timeframe that we, we, we would have right now, if we don't, uh, pass it now.
Again, since, uh, January, we talked about the time to, to take action primarily by two major projects. We have, AJ put in about seven million, six point five million, and a few, uh, a little bit more money to the AJ Holloway's complex, it was identified and estimated, I think, uh, uh, Maschada Patana did a presentation on what we were gonna do to upgrade the facility there. And that was gonna cost se- six point five, but the, the additional recreational components brought that up to around seven million, with pickleball and some of these other things to be included. Along with, we've, um, you know, talked a lot about Pops Ferry and its extension. We've asked four years in a row for raise grant, bill grant, every grant you, you could think. We've identified a high component to actually make that, uh, extension of Pops Ferry to, uh, Highway ninety, which would in effect give you the ability to make that a state road, a state corridor. That was gonna be about seven million, our part. If we are successful with our legislative effort, that seven million won't be used of this thing. Now, you know the situation in the world, even before this war, okay? The whole idea, and I think Jane's back, or maybe she's not there. Okay, but you know, it's time to pull the trigger. This includes everything but the, and inclusive of the kitchen sink. Now, we've identified those two major projects, that adds up to about fourteen million. The, the three million, uh, is there, um, for, you know, the different, different components that may be capital. But every project that you do, those two are the major ones that would be coming back and, and, you know, you wanted to have exactly the detail, but we don't have the resource, almost like a credit line when we did, uh, the Zeta recovery. We're gonna spend it on those projects that you approve. Now, that, that, the bulk of that seventeen million, those two big projects. And that's, you know, we wanted to make it, Jane, if you wanna, you know, if you, if you could add something to the situation why it's seventeen million, that's a twenty-year.
What, what she needs to do, Mayor, is she needs to answer Councilman Gines' question. He asked about schedule, about schedule and timing.
Right.
We are scheduled tomorrow to go to the Mississippi Development Bank. If you, if you get, if you do, if you stop us, and they only meet once a month.
That, that's correct, what we're trying to do is to get into a position where when the interest rates are good and the market is good, and you all are ready to go forward with the bond issue, we will already have the Mississippi Development Bank approval, and we won't have to wait for their next meeting, which could be a full month.
A workshop is putting the cart before the horse.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we approve this today, the money we still have to, has to come to this council to approve and disperse.
Three steps, all we're, all we're doing is, this first step is nothing more than asking, is, is saying that we intend to, to do bond, just we intend to do a bond, and we're gonna tell that to the Mississippi Development Bank tomorrow, and that turns us loose to begin to talk about how much.
And then we gotta approve that, we gotta approve the bond issue, and then we have to ultimately approve, approve the dispersment.
A workshop would, would do nothing more than lose us a month at least.
Well, I, sorry, may I?
No, sure.
I, I think that this is just an intent, this, this doesn't tie our hands, it doesn't obligate us to anything. Um, if he wants to do a workshop, I'm in favor of workshop post this. We can do a workshop and discuss what we wanna spend the funds on and see if the fund, if those are valid purposes, and then choose if we wanna move forward with the bond. Perfectly fine with that, however, I agree with, with the administration that the window closes today, basically.
I think we can do both, we can pass this today, we can have a workshop, and when they start coming back and saying that you have a bond at X percent, do you wanna do this, and we execute the bond? Then later we come back and say, all right, we got this money that we said we were gonna spend for these purposes, do we wanna execute those purposes?
This is just the first step, this is just the first step. The second step that Jane refers to is, um, council approval of the actual bond details, which, which means the amount, the rate, the term, as well as how we're gonna pay for it. All of those things are, will come out in a workshop.
And by, if you pass this today, under the municipal code, you've got two years within which to issue the bond. And of course, we would also publish tonight's resolution, and that gives the public, I think, three weeks to come in and protest about whether they want an election. But if you pass this tonight and we publish and we get through that three-week period, we've got that out of the way. And we would also have the Mississippi Development Bank inducement out of the way, because they won't consider that.
If we pass it next week, would it change anything?
Yes, it would mean that we can't get on the Mississippi Development Bank until April.
We had a meeting next Tuesday, after our meeting, the workshop, and pass it then, what would change?
We would lose the March meeting of the Mississippi Development Bank, they meet tomorrow. So if, if we're not on their agenda tomorrow, then the next time we can get on their agenda is April.
Any when?
Um, the second Wednesday of April, whichever day that is.
I mean, it don't really change anything other than, um, a few weeks. It not really changed anything else.
Councilman Lawrence? I don't, I don't believe it, I'm sorry, uh, Councilman Lawrence, I don't think, if we, again, if we pass this today, all it does is say they can go negotiate the bond issue. And even if they're successful with the bond issue, we have two years to, to accept it or, or, or go forward with it. We can still have the workshop next Tuesday, you know, after our regular, uh, meeting, and then, and then we can go from there. Uh, Councilman Gines?
Yeah, I think I still had a floor. Yeah, I think I still had the floor. I lost it.
You got it back, there you go.
Before, um, back to, uh, what Mike said, Mike said, and, and my original question was the time sensitivity of what we're trying to do. Because if you listen to, uh, the different people that are out there, from what I'm hearing, the rates could change easily and change anytime. And I know most of the people that I'm speaking to are talking about, uh, in the next week or two, even to the end of the month. So what you're advising us to do is jump on it while we have the opportunity.
Correct, I would advise that you get the prelim- preliminary stuff done so that when the rates are at a good point, or maybe they're not at a good point, but you think they're gonna get worse and worse if you don't pull the trigger, you will be in a position to move quickly.
Absolutely, thank you. That concludes.
Let me, uh, put this, my lawyer told me something, said, what was gas two weeks ago?
The reason I asked a couple about the workshop, two things. I want to make sure we needed seventeen million. And the other thing I like to just bring up, once again, why we always have these things the day before we have to turn them in? Why we have these things more than time?
George.
Just sit and discuss whatever somebody wants, and their war's done, whatever. All of a sudden, we have to do it tonight and pass it, you know?
This, 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 this is timing.
We gotta answer these people, you know? People still want their street fixed, people still want a lot of stuff done, and you seen, uh, fixing up a ball field like. It's not a bad thing in the city, but you gotta look at what these people looking at, what we doing?
Look, we've been talking about what we were gonna do with this for, since January, with regard to improvements of recreation, improvements in, in infrastructure. We're talking about fundings that, that may be available. This is the first step so we can pull the trigger. A- a- as, uh, Peter said, look at what gas did in two weeks. No telling what the, the rates are gonna be in two weeks, or three weeks. Every week matters, I think that's what Jane's trying to say.
And this, this resolution that you're asked to vote on tonight doesn't lock us into anything. It doesn't lock us into a rate, it doesn't lock us into an amount, doesn't lock us into any projects. It doesn't even lock us into doing a bond. It just says our intent, we have an intent to do a bond. We, we can still not do a bond.
Mr. Tisdale?
Real quick, Jane, the, the role of the Mississippi Development Bank, I'm thinking, they, they would, I guess, do they care less what our projects are, it's just you're financially able to undertake?
They, they want to know generally what our projects are and what we put in the application to them was generally infrastructure in terms of streets and drainage, and also potentially, um, improvements to athletic fields. But we can change that, but they have a modification process, so if that were to change significantly.
It may be a simplification, but it sounds like just a check and balance to be sure that you know what you're doing.
Correct.
Good deal, thank you.
Ms. Newman, anything? Mr. Barrett?
I have just one question, um, not about the, the bond per se, but does this put us at any risk of having to raise millage?
No.
Okay, that's the only question I have.
Okay. That, that comes back to the step two, step three, all of those, the things that you're gonna decide is what projects, how much money, how are we gonna pay for it? All of those things are, we're gonna be deciding down the road. This is just, we intend to start the process.
I, I, I think we understand that, so again, I, I would just tell my colleagues, this is to give her a chance to meet with, uh, you know, the, into the bond, uh, MDA or whoever you're meeting with. And, uh, it's a simple task, she has to come back with the details for us to prove that. I think the workshop that Mr. Lawrence proposes is still a good thing. We can put that on next week and talk about, okay, this is, uh, what's, uh, working through the system. Uh, we can chew on it a little bit more and identify some things that the council, uh, what the pleasure of the council is. And then when they start coming back with, uh, more of this process, then we can move forward. Or we can say, no, we don't, we, we're gonna stop it. So with that, uh, I'd call for the question, or do you wanna, I'm sorry.
No, I was just, uh, thinking what Nathan said, and Mike, I mean, you sound like if we pass this thing and do the seventeen million, we're gonna raise millage.
Who said that?
No, I'm just.
Well, I just said no millage. I mean, we, we've discussed how we were gonna pay for these things and, and offsets of what we were doing with, of a lot of things. We'll get to the details. I mean, I answered Councilman Barrett's, no. The, the answer was no about millage. We're not gonna risk that situation. We're in the best possible situation as far as reserves and things that are coming in, uh, with regard to use taxes, some of these other things to service this debt. What better position? We had the best year ever in gaming, okay? You press when you're ahead, that's what we're trying to do. Deliver some projects as fast as we possibly can. Two major projects, that extension, how long have we been talking about that? That's a transformative thing. The other thing, when's the last time you put money into AJ Holloway's sports complex? That's a transformative thing. Now, I'm not upset, I'm just expressing.
You're getting loud again.
All right, with that, with that, Mayor, we're gonna call for the question quickly before, uh, something happens here.
Seventeen million, what did it cost to pay back a million a year?
Twenty-five year bond, hopefully this is twenty. We could borrow seventeen million at two percent and, and, and that would pencil out to about eight hundred thousand a year debt service. According to my loan calc.
I haven't done the math, so.
Should be eight hundred thousand or more, roughly.
About eight hundred thousand.
Thousand or more, I mean, just.
Yeah.
We're gonna call for the question, all in favor? Those opposed?
I did it at twenty-five.
Yeah.
Okay, he was. Unanimous? All right, motion passes unanimously, right, I got that correctly. Okay, next item.
Resolution seeking legislative amendment to chapter number ten, twelve, House Bill number eighteen, twenty-three, local and private laws of the state of Mississippi.
Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Barrett, Mr. Tisdale.
Uh, yeah, we're, we're just trying to get the, uh, state to, I guess, re- remain constant, equitable in the interpretation of the, uh, statutes that's already on the books dealing with taxes on room rates, rather than the expansive explanation or interpretation by the Department of Revenue, is that right, Mr. Glavine?
That is correct.
All right, thank you, I'm in favor of this, I encourage my colleagues to vote for it, thank you.
Mr. Barrett?
I have nothing, I think you can explain it.
Okay, I, I will, if anybody else have any comments? Uh, yeah, I'd just like to re- reiterate, uh, the DOR is, uh, is interpreting, uh, two house bills that were passed to raise funds to support tourism, number one. The first house bill was passed to raise funds so that we could market the area and, and get more people to come, more visitors to the coast. And it gave, back then it was Harrison County Tourism Commission, gave them funding to go out and do their marketing programs, uh, to expand our tourism industry. Later on, um, the Coliseum expanded, Convention Center expanded, and, uh, there was a request to put an additional, uh, originally it was two percent, put an additional three percent, I believe it was, or I may have that backwards, three, three percent, put an additional two percent, to fund that expansion of the Coliseum. And, um, and we were gonna do it through a bed tax, you know, through hotel taxes. And over the years, uh, DOR is interpreting the bed tax to include other, uh, sources of revenue in the tourism industry, including but not limited to, uh, pet fees, damage fees, smoking fees, toothbrushes, and other things that are purchased that are part of the hotel, and they're trying to include that in the revenue. And they're going back in some of these audits, five plus years, and they're saying, all this money you didn't collect, you now have got to come out of pocket, you didn't pass it through the visitor. So, the county has passed a companion resolution to this one. I think it's a good idea for us to do the same thing. And it allows, if we're gonna go forward at some date in the future, and, and we are gonna include all those things, the businesses can then program their systems to collect the taxes on those additional items, and then, uh, move forward, and I think everybody would be happy. So, I'd appreciate y'all's support.
With that, uh, I'll call for the question, all in favor? Those opposed, passes six oh. Next item? Is the consent agenda?
I move it.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, we got here on, uh, F. That's my neighbor, Tyson. That's the dog that just retired, the police dog. That's Michael Warren, the, the, the commander, they live on side of me, and that's the, he's in the backyard all the time. We don't hit that collar on him, he's a pretty friendly dog. You put that police collar on him, you don't want to mess with him. He taking a bunch of people down. So congratulations to Tyson.
Well deserved, yeah?
Uh, I saw this thing on, uh, I know this discussed before, uh, Mayor by D, the bench advertising, y'all got all that straight, what everybody was doing, the bench advertisement? I know we, y'all put that on hold for a while to get that straight.
Yeah, I think we extended it for two years, and there's gonna be, you know, a lot of things that will impact, impact that, we'll get to the details, but I think basically we just extended the same, uh.
So you just pretty much moved it out two years?
Yeah.
Pretty much, I remember what it was.
Yep.
Okay. On this, uh, V, on the sidewalks and that?
Yep.
You said you, uh, you amended the budget, what'd you do? You had the money to create more sidewalks and everything, or?
Yeah, well, uh, again, this is the project we're trying to approve to, uh, it's Highway ninety, right? Uh.
Is that part of Irish Hill thing, you were doing some sidewalks in Irish Hill? Or you just putting money in a project here?
Mike? Which one is it?
V.
V.
Five Victor.
Yeah, Victor.
All we're doing is establishing a capital project, we have not, at this point, put any money into that project. Establishing a capital project to do some follow-on work along Highway ninety to remove some of the grassy areas and add additional parking bays.
Yeah, little, this is what you doing?
We had talked about that doing the.
Highway with the bays or something like that.
Extending, um, parking, uh, opportunity as well as filling in those places that right now get stacked up in their reservoir for saying to blow across the street. You know, we've, uh, uh, explored with MDOT, the ability to, to use some of those monies. Uh, we're gonna engage, I think it's next council meeting, um, Cypress?
Cypress.
To, uh, to actually, Cypress Environmental, to get the details of how many parking bays we can extend and how much. Uh, and again, I think we'll have the full, uh, support of the Sand Beach Authority, because now they're positioned, uh, to blow sand back on the, to the beach from that, so I think, uh.
Are we gonna, we gonna eliminate a lot of the grassy spots?
Exactly, as much as we can. I think, we, uh, in, in researching this thing, was we talked about from the beach road all the way to the bridge, to, to figure out how many more parking bays, you know? Some of it be concrete, some of it be asphalt. But in a lot of places, there are opportunities to put additional parking. You, you can see the success of additional parking right there at Lighthouse Park.
Yeah, definitely.
And we went from a hundred, or seventy something to a hundred and seventy something, and, uh, so that's the same thing.
Lot easier to clear it off that concrete, too.
Yep.
Instead of put the dirt and all, yeah.
That's it.
All right. And, uh, just lay it on, on with the Gerald. Oh, you hide Gerald, you make a, what are you doing?
We're just allowing some hours to, to extend to, um, what.
He's still, we didn't extend his period of, uh, employment, we, we did, or engagement. We just extended the total number of hours he had. He's working almost exclusively on, well, a couple of projects, but he's, he working very exclusively on the, uh, the project to do the, uh, new improved pier at, uh, Lighthouse. And, uh, we actually, there were meetings today with the MR on, and the Corps of Engineers about our plans to, uh, build back better.
Okay, so he just, uh, y'all hire him as needed, pretty much?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Tisdale?
Uh, yes, on item D, this is, uh, amending the municipal budget to sponsor Rappiscan. Uh, we're, we're moving five thousand from the general fund to non-departmental for this golf event. And rather than remove, move it from the general fund, I'd prefer to move it from the, uh, either the personnel or the executive budget. The, uh, personnel.
We did that last week.
There's a little left in there.
Well, I got my car.
Exactly, it's almost, exactly, it's almost five thousand in there. So rather than take it out of the general fund, I'd like to see it either out of the personnel, excuse me, the personnel from the executive budget or the administration budget. And I would offer an amendment at, at this time to do just that. Or the council budget, either one, yeah. Motion to amend? Item five, item five D, so that the money would be moved not from the general fund, but from either the personnel or the exec, excuse me, either the executive or administrative budget under personnel.
There's a motion?
Explain that again, Paul, what are you doing?
Sure, well, wh- what we're looking to do on item E is, is to donate ten thousand dollars to the Rappiscan Golf Classic. We budgeted five thousand of that under non-departmental for that event. So we're looking at coming up with another five thousand for that ten thousand dollar donation. Uh, this resolution proposes that the money come out of the general fund. I would prefer that it come out of either the administrative or the executive budget from their personnel budget.
All right, there's a, a motion to amend item D, is there a second?
Any difference?
No difference, is there a second?
Well, there being no second, there being no second, then the amendment fails.
Just, just, I still love you.
I love you too.
The other item?
Um, on item P, this deals with, uh, Coast Bench, and.
Sorry, Fofo, to cut you off, but.
No, no.
There are, uh, there are, I think, seventy-seven benches, I believe. Sixty-seven or seventy-seven. But there, there are three locations that I'd like removed from the list. There are three benches at the intersection of Pass Road and Eisenhower Drive. And I'd, I, I would offer an amendment to remove those three from the, the agreement.
Is this a workshop or an amendment?
Amendment, I think. No workshop.
Okay.
It's an amendment, amendment.
An amendment to remove which ones?
Uh, I, I think there are numbered items twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. They happen to be three benches at the intersection of Eisenhower and Pass Road.
We, we could support that from an administration, we can support that amendment.
All right.
I second it.
All right, seconded by Mr. Lawrence, any discussion? All in favor? Amendment passes, and then we'll get on when we get to the items and the consent, then we'll, we'll pass everything. What's that?
Six oh.
Six oh.
Six oh?
I thought you were doing this.
I didn't support it.
Okay.
Six one.
So, so we're gonna go five one with the count? Okay, five one, uh, Mr. Gines, uh, voted against it.
The, uh, last item I have is item Q. This is, uh, dealing with the Gulf Coast Center for Nonviolence, they're submitting a, an app, a grant application. And I know there was some question about whether we had to have an MOU signed, whether we had to have an MOU signed, uh, Peter, for the Gulf Coast Center for Nonviolence, their grant application. I know that we have a letter of commitment signed, you know, with, uh, indicating that the city courts, municipal courts support, but there was some question about whether we had to have an MOU signed by the mayor.
Yeah, I, I spoke with Heather, uh, before the meeting, and we talked about the county had some questions. I, I think all those can be resolved favorably. The main intent is to get, to meet the deadline of this week to get our grant application in. I don't think anything being done is gonna hurt that, hurt our chances. But we're still gonna move forward and try to understand what the county's issues were and, uh, get our things in order. We probably will come back in the next week or so with the MOU.
Okay, there's no local match required, if I understand it correctly, we could approve this tonight and, correct?
No, that's correct.
That's it, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Mr. Gines, any items? All right, Mr. Glines, any items?
I have none.
Okay, Ms. Newman? Mr. Deming? And I have none. So all in favor on the consent agenda, including the item that as amended earlier?
Five P.
Five P.
P, P for Paul.
P. All in favor? Opposed? Passes six, six zero.
My only exception, never mind, I'm good, thank you.
All right, no one offered any exceptions as discussed afterwards. Okay, code enforcement hearings, we'll go ahead and open that up.
Item A, American Public Realty LLC, two seventy-two Bone Street. This property is still in violation.
Anyone here from American Public Realty LLC? There being no one, this case is closed.
Item B, John B. and Linda Dawn Corran Bankston, twenty-one thirty Floyd Drive. This property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of John B. and Linda Dawn? Bankston, okay, come on up.
My name is Linda B. Coranna. I live at twenty-one thirty Floyd Avenue, and Floyd Drive, I guess, yeah, Floyd Drive. And nobody is taking senior citizens seriously. We have contacted commercial people, we have contacted residential people. We cannot get anyone to come and fill in our swimming pool. We've been fighting with the City of Biloxi for almost a year about this. And I don't know what else to say, except what can you do to help?
Is there any time extension that would help you? I mean, if you've been fighting this for a long time, I don't know what an extension would do.
I just don't know what to do. I mean, do we have any local people that will come and assist?
You can what?
We can speak with Back Bay Mission.
Okay, so why don't we entertain a motion for a thirty-day extension?
Promote that.
All right, moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Ms. Deming, or Ms. Newman, so.
Ms. Deming?
Well, he, I thought he raised his hand. I thought he raised his hand. But anyway, we give you thirty-day extension, and seriously, hopefully, Back Bay Mission can.
Right, thank you.
All in favor of the extension?
Appreciate it.
Moved by unanimous vote, six nothing.
Item number C, Rosemarie Blanchard Trust, two seventy-three Queerens Avenue. This property is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Rosemarie Blanchard Trust? There being none, this case is closed.
Item D, Christopher B. Smith, one forty-four Kessler Circle. This property is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Christopher B. Smith? There being no one, this case is closed.
Item E, Robert E. Smith III, two forty-nine Coon Street. This property is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Robert E. Smith III? There being no one, this case is closed.
Item F, Mary P. Swetman Estate, Carof Brady A. Swetman, two forty-one Hopkins Boulevard. This property is still in violation, but Mr. Swetman is making progress on it. I would ask for thirty days.
I would ask for thirty days.
All right, moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Glines, any discussion? All in favor of the extension? Proved by unanimous six oh vote.
Item G, TSWS Environmental Properties LLC, one two one six three Parker's Creek Road. This property is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of TSWS Environmental Properties LLC? There being no one, this case is closed.
Item H, Tisha D. Underwood, two eighty-four Dewey Circle. This property is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Tisha D. Underwood?
Mr. Creel, I noticed that there had been a thirty-day extension previously on this. Any progress made in that thirty days?
No, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay, there being no one here, this case is closed.
Item I, Jill Rouse Zacharias, two fifty-five Lemieux Street. This property is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Jill Rouse Zacharias? There being no one, this case is closed.
Item J, Charles Pinkston, two oh six three Stonebridge Drive. This case has been resolved.
Okay, code enforcement hearings are now closed. Move on to the routine agenda, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Tisdale, Mr. Lawrence?
Good, same, some same country, Dan Hughes, Walt. The luck of the Irish here.
Well, it was a little bit, actually, it was the luck of the Irish. We've been waiting for that two point four eight, six million to come in, and it literally came in this morning about nine o'clock into our accounts. So that was great. I got to report something favorable to the council. So we're doing very well, sir.
Did quite well then today, huh?
Yes, doing very well.
They have made it, we'll take it, thank you.
All right, Mr. Tisdale, you have anything to add?
Not a thing, nice outfit, Mr. Rhodey. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else have anything to add? Okay, all in favor of the routine agenda? Those opposed, motion carries, motion to recess. Mr. Tisdale, and seconded by Mr. Lawrence.